We all ready? Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, eight thirty a.m., Wednesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, in the City Hall chambers. As always, we will start with our pledge and our invocation, and today we have Pastor Matt Ennis of West Christian Church. Please stand.
Good morning. Let us pray. Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Let us, please, guide the hearts of these men and women as they make their decisions. We seek you first in all they do together. We give you the city's business, the city's suppliers, the city's customers, and its workforce. May we always be mindful of their service. Place the residents and business owners' welfare at the center of their hearts as they make decisions to steward the resources of this city. We confess that we are nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join all veterans in the audience with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, we'll call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk.
Good morning. We do not have any proclamations this morning, but we do have a presentation to, a check presentation to the Bradenton Police Department.
All right, if we could have come forward, and I'd like all the board members also. And the most important person should be up there with you, Ernie, is Cindy Lou, so get up here with her, if you don't mind. Because without her, you wouldn't be the person you are, we know that.
Exactly right, we know that. Well, many of you know that on February twenty-first, I was at the Pittsburgh Pirates spring training game, shagging fly balls with the Manatee Chamber of Commerce, and I experienced a sudden cardiac arrest. Fortunately, I was there. Doctor Patrick DeMio came and performed CPR, and Brian McNamee, trainer for the Pittsburgh Pirates, applied an AED and brought me back to life. My heart had stopped for around three minutes, and I ended up having to get four stents. And so I realized that I needed to pay it forward, and Mayor Brown graciously invited me to the Pittsburgh Pirates game a week later, and Chief Bevan was at the game, and we talked about what can we do to pay forward. And I ended up starting a foundation called Defibrillate Manatee Foundation, and we're raising money to provide defibrillators to nonprofits and for, you know, for school system and in the police department, and Chief Bevan let me know that their patrol cars did not have defibrillators. So that was the first thing on the agenda, so I'm here today to present a check for twenty-one thousand dollars for the purchase of twenty-one defibrillators, and I'm presenting that to the Bradenton Blue Foundation, to my good friend Lou Marucci, who's a good customer of mine in the past, and we played softball, he reminded me, we played softball back in the day at St. Joe's, and so I'm able to do that. And for those of you that don't know, when I had my heart attack, we also found out through a body scan, through lifeguard imaging, that my wife had stage-two cancer in her kidney, and she had that removed May sixteenth, and so we've been blessed twice, and so we're paying it forward, and we're so happy to be able to present this check today. We'll also be presenting a check to the Manatee County School Board for CPR kit to help with the new initiative that the legislators have set forth. The ninth graders and eleventh graders need to learn how to use CPR in the new school system, so I'll be presenting that to the school board later on. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Christine Aristad. She's with the American Heart Association. I co-chair this year's River Walk on the eighteenth, so I'd just like her to talk to you a little about the Heart Association.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. Over three hundred and fifty thousand cardiac arrests happen outside of the hospital setting, and so having AEDs in this way in our police and out in the community, certainly teaching CPR to our young people and to our, certainly in our community, is becoming more and more important. It's interesting to me how many people don't know it, and so one of the focuses that we have with the American Heart Association is to get out into our community and teach the skills. Next year, in two thousand and twenty-four, the American Heart Association will be a hundred years old. We're celebrating our centennial. We'll be back to celebrate with you here and certainly to get the word out. So we're hoping that many of you, many of the community members, can come out and join us on November eighteenth for our Heart Walk, to really get behind the mission and show the community that we need to be more focused in this area, so thank you.
So also, give us a little update of the recent past of where the Heart Walk has been and what we did to get it here in the River Walk, so.
Well, we've been on the other side, and we've had it at Payne Park, and so we are working with our partners at Manatee Memorial Hospital. They are celebrating an anniversary themselves, they're setting a seventieth anniversary, and said, you know, would love to be able to celebrate right here in Bradenton, so we're very, very excited to be on the River Walk this year for the first time.
Well, I think it's been, you know, many, many years that it's kind of been south of us, and we love our neighbors to the south, but, you know, we like to have stuff here as well, so.
It's a beautiful scenic walk, and so we're excited to be there, and we're very pleased with all the organizations in Manatee County that have stepped forward.
And we've got, obviously, I'm on the executive committee, and then we've also got staff members from each department that are starting to flow in, hopefully, that we've worked out to really get even our employees with the city, not only supportive, but also, you know, we've had some, a situation with us, one of our public works in the garbage collection had a situation and didn't make it, and so, you know, you look at those things and try to, you know, pay it forward a little bit, like Ernie's and the group's doing now, but, and also what we can do individually to make things better.
I'm a Manatee County resident myself, so it's nice to, it's nice to have it here as well. So thank you, hope to see many of you councilpeople.
Thank you, Ms. Parnaby, did you have?
Oh, no, no, no.
About my eye, okay, I didn't.
No, I. So we hope to see many of you out in many businesses join us as well, thank you for the time.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys, and thanks, Ernie, so let's, let's get the, let's get that great picture, because who else wants to talk?
Well, I'd like to introduce Lou Marucci, the president of the Bradenton Blue Foundation, and Brian Fears coordinating all this for us, and like Lou to just talk a little.
And obviously, Lou, introduce your group, who's on your board.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and again, Ernie and Mrs. Weathers, thank you so much. I'm on the board of the Bradenton Blue Foundation, and we have Ross Hodges, who's a member, and Josh Kramer, and Brian Thier, and we work hard as a civic group to raise funds for the well-being of the City of Bradenton Police Department and the community, and again, it's people like Ernie that have done what you've done to make our organization feel great about what we do for the community, and these units are exceptional, we need them, and I'd like to turn it over to the chief here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you. Just, just very quickly, seven years ago, when I showed up and they handed me the keys to my brand-new car, I said, where's my AED? And I was told that we only had about four on our side of the building. You know, I think Ernie can attest to the fact that these devices save lives all over the country, but they're expensive. And over the course of the seven years as we've replaced our vehicles, that's become part of our replacement plan. Every car that shows up, we budget for an AED. When the event happened with Ernie and we met, he called and he says, you know, you know, what can we do? I said, well, you know, we're still about twenty AEDs short, and you really never know where those cars are going to be and where we're going to need those devices, and he looked at us both, Mayor, and you recall this, and he said, done, I'm going to make this happen. And I'll tell you, you know, what makes me feel good is, is so far, we've pulled it out several times, but we haven't had a story quite like Ernie's, but someday we will, and it's going to be there at our fingertips to save lives, and that's really what we are all about. And so to the Bradenton Blue Foundation, thank you for stepping up and being the conduit to make this happen, and Ernie, thank you for reaching out and grabbing a hold of our community members, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just a lifesaving device that we couldn't be more proud to say that we are now fully equipped in our agency with AEDs, so thank you.
And as we know, most times, the police officer probably gets there first, even before EMS, a lot of times, so if they have that training as well as, obviously, there, that was, that was, that was nothing to the fire department, it was saying, the cops are on the road in their zone, so. Sorry, chief, Rocco and Doug.
I'd also like to recognize Brian Fears, because Brian was a big part of this, and he worked with the vendor to really get a good price on it, so he really made sure that we were able to put this together. So at this time, I'd like to present the check to Chief Bevan, and if we can get a photo shot of that big guy.
Yep, yep, appreciate it. Jeannie, do you think, was to stand up here, kind of be behind him, or?
Yeah, we'll stand up here.
Yeah, come up here and then us get on the dais behind him? Is that the best, that seems to be the best way to get everybody in the picture.
Can you guys get tight?
We're getting tight.
We're getting.
I don't want to leave out our shorter cats.
You can get here, scoot down a little to the left. Is that better?
Well, I'm behind the chief there.
I've taken a bunch in case anyone's lucky.
Good? All right, thank you.
I am going to leave a note from whoever sits in my chair to stop doing what they do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's either too low or.
Don't forget your tutorial, I know.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
We do not have any other presentations this morning.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll call for citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting of any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. When you come forward, I'll call your name, we have two cards. I'll ask you to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you. And the first one, we have Alma Colvin. Oh, okay, so that's a public hearing, I'm sorry, I didn't see that part of it, so you hold off on that. So then we have Cynthia Rogers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Cindy Rogers, and I live at forty-five twenty-three, one twenty-third Street West, in the historic village of Cortez. Shall I go ahead?
Yep.
Okay. So I am a retired child safety expert, a resident of the village of Cortez, and most importantly, a grandmother of two young children. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I am here to raise concern about a safety issue at the River Walk playground. What a wonderful resource that playground and splash pad are for both local and visiting families. My concern is about the easy access and lack of appropriate barriers to the river by young children. Informally, I have spoken with other grandparents, caregivers, and parents who share this concern, and I also understand that with my conversation with Superintendent Peterson, that I'm not the first person to raise this issue. Children are naturally drawn to water, and there's a lot of activity on the river that attracts children from the playground to the river's edge. I understand that constant supervision of children is important, but we all know that there can be unexpected lapses in attention, especially if a parent or caregiver is at the park with more than one child. More U.S. children ages one to four die from drowning than any other cause. Drowning is a preventable public health problem. Just two months ago, the United States released the National Water Safety Action Plan to unite communities and help put an end to preventable drowning tragedies. Use of barriers is one of the levels of protection addressed in the plan. I respectfully request that you authorize an immediate, appropriate, and safe retrofit of the fencing along the playground area of the River Walk to eliminate any potential drowning hazard to our kids. I urge you to do this before a tragedy strikes, and I thank you for attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Now, we'll move on to Rocco Salvatore. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Rocco Salvatore, I'm a retired firefighter, my address is exempt from disclosure, I'm here to present a multi-volume report on police response time versus fire because of the disparaging comments. You're all familiar with the centuries-long rivalry between our brothers and sisters in Blue, but that is not why I'm here. I'm a retired firefighter, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I'm here to talk about retiree health insurance. A couple of days ago, I received a letter in the mail informing me that my premiums were going up nearly three hundred and fifty dollars per month, and after discussing it with my union rep, Doug Huffman, I watched the city council meeting and realized that the intention was due to that again next year. That would certainly put my health insurance premiums in the realm of costing me about half of my retirement. I don't believe that was the intent of anybody on this council. After serving nearly half my, over half my life alongside some of you, I just know better than that. I think the history on where we are with retiree health insurance is very important. For two decades, I've assisted Doug Huffman with negotiations, we've helped the city work through what was nearly a hundred million dollar liability for OPEB that has been reduced to less than a third of that now. We assisted with that over a decade ago through some of the language that's in our current collective bargaining agreement, and, you know, whether or not, you know, we need to buy all the attorney's new BMWs and engage in some kind of dispute over this is irrelevant because I don't think we need to. We're here to do what we always do, and that's assist the city. When, when our pensions were underfunded, we were the first to raise our hand and say we're here to help. When there was a property tax crisis during the Great Recession, we raised our hands and said we're here to help. It's, it's what we do, it's what we all do together. You know, the previous administration came to us and said there were retiree health insurance problems. We thought we solved it. That's why there's the bifurcation between pre-two thousand twelve and post-two thousand twelve employees. The cost share is dramatically different through those, between those, and so I just, I wanted to raise the issue that this is not a de minimis increase, it certainly isn't easing into anything. Not only were premiums increased, but my out-of-pocket costs were almost tripled in one year with no notice after extensively negotiating last year over retiree health insurance benefits. So I don't believe that was your intent, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and as always, we're here to help.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I have no other citizen comments, so I would, a couple of things of, you know, we do it after the citizens' comment where we kind of comment, so I probably, like, you know, with Mrs. Rogers' concern, I mean, obviously, we're going to take every opportunity to look at something and see if there is some options out there. I don't know if Mr. Perry, if this should, maybe you and Mr. McClellan can look into kind of some things and maybe come back with something if there is any opportunity to make anything safer, we're always looking at that. So I think that's something that can be looked into, and then I know we have, you know, this, this body through even the insurance committee and a lot of due diligence, you know, looked at some things that maybe it's a little different than what we anticipated, and, and we knew there may be that, that universe where there was that small percentage that might have the bigger increase, but we've asked Mr. Perry and through his administration maybe to look at some opportunity to maybe fix that before it gets started in a way that has an opportunity, because that was not the intent of any of us to really, and then again, you look at the majority that we've looked at, probably had a significant increase, but not that significant, so any comments on that, Mr. Perry?
No, I just, Mayor, Council, I appreciate Mr. Salvatore coming down and talking about it. I think, as you pointed out, that, that what this involves is a small sphere of folks that inordinately are kind of paying a fairly excessive amount, as pointed out, in this case, up to three hundred and fifty dollars more on a monthly basis, and so we're going to go back and take a look at what we can do to try to mitigate that in order to, to have a plan that contemplates the concessions that were provided in the past, that, that deals with the shortages that are tenanted to this year, and the seven hundred and forty-eight dollars per month that the city was picking up, basically, that we're trying to somewhat cost share in, and so we'll get with, with the folks from IAF and Mr. Huffman and others and try to come up with something. The numbers are fairly, I want to say, they're, I don't want to say small, but, but they're fairly limited. I think there was a hundred and seventy-two retirees, out of a hundred and seventy-two, there was ninety-five that were on Medicare, and then some of them are broken up into pre-two thousand twelve benefits, some are post-two thousand twelve, and so when you start to nibble that down, you're probably looking at a world sphere of maybe twenty to thirty people, so we should be able to do something with that.
Right, and again, we all know that as insurance goes in our community, it's got to be worked through, and when we spend a lot of time, probably more time than we've spent in the past, in trying to figure out a fair for everybody, and this is just one of those anomalies that, that seemed a little different than what we anticipated, so.
Right, and thus far, I mean, what we've been able to do is pretty much vitiate a million-dollar-plus deficit that was being picked up by the taxpayers of the city through the budget deficiency and everything, so I think by and large, what we did does good, good things for the taxpayers, for the city, and for, and cost share, although slightly more expensive, there had not been an increase in quite some time and the like, and so to that extent, also for the employees, but there is this, this body of folks that, that Mr. Salvatore has pointed out that we may want to reconsider certain, certain aspects on.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll leave that in your hands to.
I assure you, I will provide a hundred percent diligence, and the staff and I will look at that, try to bring about the equities and, and balance to it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So then, after you do your thing, does it go back to the insurance committee then for discussion, and then it comes back here, or?
I probably have to look at what the process is, and I wouldn't want to comment on exactly what the procedural route would be for this. At this time, I don't know that enough about it at this time.
We'll, we'll look at it both ways, if the insurance committee needs to have a special meeting and then, but it'll be moved quickly, so I think it's something we can move quickly before October one to make sure it's right, so. All right, thank you, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I don't know, because I'm not involved with that committee, and, but it just seems just in general terms, not just with insurance, taxes, whatever it is. All these different exclusions and, and people that get excluded put the burden on some of the people that don't have those, you know, like exemptions with your property taxes. You've got all these people keeping their, their, the cost of taxes for them artificially low, that it's putting a bigger burden, so at some point, do you have to look at the whole thing and maybe everyone paying their fair share, as opposed to some people getting these exemptions and, you know, putting all the burden on somebody else? I don't know, I just, I'm, I, it concerns me when I see us trying to piecemeal one exemption here and there, and, and then you end up with the burden all on a few.
Well, I'll take a stab at that, it's called union.
Oh, well, like I said, I'm not part of all this, but.
Good, and sometimes interesting, I'm not going to say the other word, but, but we've got to deal through it, and, and the union, as Mr. Salvatore said, especially, you know, as they've worked through things, they've given concessions to help the city over the years for some things, so I think it's in a fair way that we look at how, what they may have given up in a time when we were actually, the city in nine, ten, eleven, whatever it was, was cutting to the bone, they worked with the city, you know, before all of our times, but you look at the history, and I think that's one of the things that we really have to do is, you, if you stop looking at the history, then you start going backwards.
Well, I.
Protect those things is important.
Okay, well, I took him, he seemed genuine about, let's roll up our sleeves, he doesn't, he wants to be fair to everybody, and that's, that's why I'm saying that, I don't know anything about the union stuff, but I'm just saying, that's where a lot of this starts going wrong.
And it's a general matter, I mean, what you're referring to is carve-outs, and when you do carve-outs, sometimes they have intended consequences and unintended consequences, particularly in the longer view, and, and for sure, and taxing is a great, is a great example of tax policy, but, you know, what we have to do is what we have to do at the time to a certain extent, so it makes a compelling case for a carve-out, probably back when we had to, to patch this problem, and now it's coming back to haunt us a little bit, but, but I certainly completely agree with you, that, that sometimes it, it causes a confusion in, in really how the incidence of, of the, the cost is, is applied and borne, no doubt.
And I think we can work this out, Mr. Kramer had a comment.
Yeah, carve-outs, whatever you want to call them, I would ask that, based on what Mr. Perry said, if HR has identified who those retirees are, if you could please reach out to them in some fashion before we do anything more, to let them know that the forms that they were either emailed or mailed that show that significant increase very well may be adjusted, that we're looking to find a solution.
Good, thank you. All right, well, we'll move forward on that, so, Madam Clerk.
Item six is the consent agenda, and due to ongoing changes in the agreement, staff would like to pull item Q, and that will be brought forward at the September thirteenth meeting.
Q will be September thirteenth.
So we are requesting approval of items A through P.
As, as, just a comment, I know we talked, and it was something that we, we've tried not to do as much as have some agenda adjustments after the agenda goes out. Some of the things were, I think, legal, some of the things were just timing, because a lot of times when you get to the end of the year, so, you know, it wasn't substantial adjustments, but they were still things that needed to be updated, so I just want to assure everyone that it wasn't that we were changing any agenda things, it was just some logistical, and I don't know if Madam Clerk or Mr. Rudisell have any comment.
Yeah, there, and there is one item that I'd like to, to add some language to, but, but the, the MOU with Tropicana for the debris site was something that we'd been, that the city needed to get on, but we've been going back and forth with, with their legal over even, I mean, it just got final yesterday, so that was something that we were kind of working on last minute, and then I understand there was a, there was a typo in the version that got sent out, and it left out the part of the last sentence, I'll just read that in the record so that, that we have it, and that is, at the end of paragraph ten, it ends with.
In what number?
That is item.
P.
P.
For the record, yep.
Yeah, so in, in paragraph ten, it ends with just a U, and it should say, until such utilization has concluded and the designated site has been restored, so we'll, we'll add that language in the final version.
Okay, so with pulling Q to the September thirteenth meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I gave you the wrong agenda item, I apologize. We are pulling item B.
B, okay, yeah, B.
Sorry about that. So we are requesting approval of items A and C through Q with Attorney Rudisell's language addition and item P. addition and item P.
Right. And, and if I could, on, on item B, we got comments yesterday from their legal department, which we responded to last night, but we, we haven't gotten a final confirmation from them, so we decided just pull it for the next agenda.
Right. And I think some of this was about timing-wise of our year-end and that, so, Ms. Barnaby?
No, I was.
Oh.
I'm, I'm confused where we're at right now.
So we're pulling.
B is the.
B is in board.
Florida, Florida Bloom Medicare event, but he's talking about something different.
He's talking about P.
Okay. P, okay.
P for the, for the additional language.
So what, B's being pulled and that's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And adding the additional language to, just finishing the sentence on, on Q.
P, okay.
Mayor.
P, yes, yes, ma'am.
I had one additional question about P. Should I pull it or should I just ask it since we're having?
Well, I think since we're having the first initial discussion, I think we can ask it now.
Okay. The, my only other question was whether the term was really supposed to end at the end of September. I think the date was like September something thirty, twenty, twenty-three, and maybe it was supposed to be twenty, twenty-four. I'm sorry, I should have the paragraph reference. I need to make sure I'm in the right one.
So why don't, why don't, if you don't mind making a motion, Miss Moore, to pull that for further discussion? Now, if it's just a typo thing, then we want to leave it, but.
Yeah, I think.
But approving the A through O while B is being forwarded and P will discuss so they can fix it.
Mayor, I have had the opportunity to brief and discuss all of these particular items with counsel, mostly in person and one or two by phone extensively, though.
Okay, thank you. All right, so is there a motion, Ms. Moore?
I, I'm going to make it. I, I see that in this agreement, it is, the term is for a year from the effective date, so I might be confusing it with another agreement.
So.
So I will make a motion to approve A, six A, six C through six.
Q, okay. All right, and we have a motion to approve six A and then six C through Q with B being pulled till our September thirteenth meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Mrs. Moore and then Mrs. Coachman. Kind of heard, my right ear hears more than my left. And any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item seven A is a public hearing for disposition of CRA-owned property located at one zero two one Sixth Street Court East.
Okay, who's gonna speak to that from staff or CRA? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, if it's a public hearing, are we swearing people in?
It's not a quasi-judicial hearing.
Okay.
All right, good morning.
Chris Munyon, acting executive director for the CRA. So before we go to ten twenty-one, I did want to just address that we were going to have a second property as well that was advertised. There was a typo in that advertisement, so we have to re-advertise that, and that'll come before the September thirteenth, but I just wanted that on record in case somebody was here for that part, that advertisement. So basically, what it is, is that the CRA owns a property at ten twenty-one Sixth Street Court East. The property was purchased by the CCRA in two thousand and six and transferred over to the CRA in two thousand and sixteen. It's a three-two residential, single-family home that the, at, at one point, the CRA, it was a rental for the, the CCRA. On June fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, the CRA board made a motion that was carried out, five, five-zero vote, that the CRA was no longer interested in being landlords and directed staff to move forward with the, looking at disposing of those properties. On February twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three, the board made, the CRA board made a motion to approve an advertisement calling for offers on that property. On March second, two thousand and twenty-three, an advertisement to dispose the CRA-owned properties and central CRA was advertised, and from March second to March thirty-first was we were receiving offers. On this property, we received three offers. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the CRA board made a motion to instruct staff to negotiate a purchase and sell contract with Alma and Katrina Colvin for the aforementioned property. The offer came in at below fair value for the property, so per statute one six three point three eight in paragraph two, in the event a real property being disposed of is less than fair value, we have to come to the governing board for their approval to move forward with executing a contract for sale and purchase for that property. So that's what we're here for today, is to get the approval from counsel to go ahead and move forward with that, sell of that property for, under that fair value.
All right, any questions from the council before we go to public hearing?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perry.
Who made a determination what the fair value was of a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Staff did. I made that determination.
Seek any outside appraisal?
It wasn't, it wasn't appraisal, so what I did was I did an evaluation in November of two thousand and twenty-two, and that evaluation was a little bit higher. We've, you know, the markets changed a little bit and the condition of the homes bringing that down, so I did, actually looked at more recent, and that's kind of where the evaluation lies because of the condition of the home. And, you know, interest rates are now like seven percent, so.
How much did the CRA pay for that property?
It was one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
What's the assessment on it?
The assessment is, one second. So the property appraiser has the value of the land at fifty-one thousand and the improvements of one nine, one hundred and ninety-seven, four ninety-one, for a total of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one.
What, you mentioned you had three bids on the property?
Yes.
Is the one that's proposed the highest of the three bids?
It is not the highest, but it was determined because of the advertisement of how it went out, is that we asked for it to be a homesteaded property. The offer that came in a little higher was for ownership and not for ownership, not for homesteaded ownership. It was for, they were gonna lease out the property.
And you guys wanted it to be homesteaded?
Correct.
Community preservation of the neighborhood, I'm assuming?
Correct, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
If I may.
Ms. Coachman?
If I may make a statement. I, I feel like I'm speaking for the board, even though we're not the board at this moment. There's, there's a lot of concern and a lot of effort now being focused on homesteading properties in a low-income area where it has become literally ninety-plus percent rental. And we know that sometimes, well, most times, if you own your property, you're gonna take very good care of your property. So the focus is right now is to encourage and increase as much homeownership in these communities so that, that, that they can become a community that thrives and not a transient community or a community full of situations where they're just not vested in the area. So I think that was somewhat the mindset in looking at this in this way. And if I'm reading the resolution we just passed, you know, we have every right to.
No, I, I think that's, it's a great statement. I think what, and I'm, and I'm gonna assume what Mr. Perry was kind of talking about, was trying to get on the record what happened for the public, because the public could look at something and say, oh, A, B, and C, in reality, we're wanting to get it. Everything that, that I've done since I've been here with some of our communities is about homeownership, because we know people take more pride in homeownership. The one question that kind of came to me as we were talking here is what is the length of the requirement of homeownership? Is that in there?
Well, part of the, as is purchase and sell contract, there is a stipulation or requirement that there will be a redevelopment kind of agreement that will stipulate those types of things. So we were looking at between five and seven-year commitment for the homesteaded, and that they would, you know, not be able to, there'd be some, like, if they needed to sell the property or something like that, they would have to come back and get that waived, that they could sell the property, you know, so there's certain restrictions that we're still working out, certain details. This is just so we can get to that contract, and then they still have to do their due diligence on, you know, inspections and things like that as well. So it's not, we're not conveying it tomorrow. It's still some things to do.
It's gonna be truthful, five to seven years seems like not a long time in our lives now, and somebody could flip that and turn it into a rental in five years. It doesn't seem like we're protecting the consistency of the neighborhood that way. I mean, I'm for what we're talking about, but I just think, that's just my opinion, and I haven't been involved in all this because I'm not on the CRA board. But it seems like we should be at some sort of, most mortgages are fifteen or thirty years when you're getting mortgages, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, that's, again, I'm for this, but I just think it should be a longer term.
It'll be looked into.
Right.
Mayor, just one question. Will this have to come back to the CRA board for final approval? And, and I just wanted to add that, that I was just trying to put on the record some facts, that's why I reported the transaction. I completely understand and understand why we want to move in that direction. And just one last question, which is, in negotiation, would it be a, a, a deed restriction on the deed that would run with the land, so that if it was to be sold later on to a subsequent purchaser, bona fide purchaser for value, that in that case, they would be restricted to the same conditions that the original purchaser were restricted to?
Yes, we are looking at how we're gonna do it. Our conflict attorney's here, so she can maybe answer.
Ms. Moore had a quick, I think, a question first.
Right, I was just gonna clarify that this, a proposed version of the contract is on the agenda for tomorrow's CRA meeting, and it does have a reference to this being contingent on approval of CRA board and city council and a satisfactory redevelopment agreement, but perhaps to your point, we might want to direct, and of course, subject to conflict counsel, that we, if we felt strongly about some terms, that we direct Mr. Munyon to add them to this before we execute it.
Good, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Nancy Meyer with Trastania. Exactly what you're all saying, anything you want, we need to know that, so we can include that in the redevelopment, development agreement, discuss it with the possible purchasers. I know the intent was exactly what you're, you're saying. Get someone in there, homestead it, and if they choose, they can't, they can't stay, they need to leave for some reason, either bring it back to the CRA, let the CRA decide if they want to retain it, or how would we keep that homesteaded property going forward? So we know that's the intent, and that language will be included as we move forward. And you will see it again, so you'll have a final.
Well, the CRA will have final approval tomorrow, if it's all done.
Not, not for the actual transfer of the property.
Oh, okay, so it'll come back to the council.
Just to let us get to the contract negotiation part. Because of the value of the property, we need you as counsel to say it's okay to continue to go forward.
Listening to what you just said now made me think of something also that says, hey, if, if for some reason something happens in three years, you'd have to have the first right of refusal to the CRA at, at purchase price or with a, you know, because we've seen things that, where people get, they buy it for a hundred thousand, and then all of a sudden it's worth five hundred thousand in three years, or market value, and then they want five hundred for it. So I think there should be some sort of lure, some, whatever you'd call it in this case, in there that, hey, we're gonna give you a fair increase, but because you bought it for so much less, you don't get to reap the benefits of what, you know, because again, that's, that's, you, this city has been blamed for a lot of things, and whether they did it or not before our times, we're trying to be fair, and I love the part of homeownership. I mean, that's something we're working over by Braden Village and trying to really come up with, instead of rentals, homeownership. And, you know, a habitat for humanity on steroids is what somebody called it to help. This is a perfect what we're doing, but we've got to make sure it doesn't become, you know, a negative in two, three, four years on either whether we're here or somebody else is here. So, and that's just my opinion.
Understood, and all that'll be taken into account, and when final, final approval comes back to the CRA board, I'm sure they'll be looking for all those.
Okay.
That language.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more question. Counsel, have, has counsel considered whether there is any prohibitions on qualified purchasers to this property, conflicts of interest or otherwise?
Conflicts of interest due to the possible purchaser?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Yes, we have. I've looked at everything I can think of to look at. We realize the individual trying to purchase the property worked for the city. The advertisement did not prohibit someone that worked for the city to try to purchase this property. She met the criteria, she, I think it's her sister, met the criteria, there's no direct conflict of this council or the CRA board making a vote on that. She does not, you don't have any pecuniary gain in what she may or may not do. You're not related to her as far as I know, or her sister, or, or you're not in business with any of them. So it, it's absolutely fine.
I think that needs to be on the record for everybody's benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else, Mr. Munios, or go to public comment, public hearing?
I just wanted to thank everybody, and then we, this is another step in the process, so, you know, everything's gonna be looked at, and we'll, we'll make it happen.
All right, well, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, so. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Alma Colvin. My address right now is forty-eight eighty fifty-first Street, West Apartment ten fourteen. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak right now. The purchase price is below market value, and it's not to try and trick city council or anything. It was looking at, when I did the walkthrough on, I believe, March eleventh, noticing that there was flooring that was missing, appliances either missing or seemed to be old, and taking into consideration the fact that I would have to spend a certain amount of money to go into that property to get the flooring done, the electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing, to make sure it's up to code, and pot, and the roof. There was some questions about the roof, which will, I know, out of pocket, I would have to take care of any home inspections, and if it comes up that the roof may be needing to be redone, that would have to come out of the pocket. But as far as the concern on homestead, this is, where this house is, is an area I grew up in, and I go to church, and my family grew up Regent Park behind Tropicana, loved ones in the Washington Park area of Bradenton. This is across the street from my church, St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church. So that's why I'm there, and I have no intentions, and my, and I speak on behalf of my sister, Katrina, who's currently teaching at, in Sarasota right now, that this is a forever home. There's no intention of ever selling it or renting it or anything. We love this area, love Bradenton, and I love working for the city. You guys have blessed me tremendously and put me in, in job positions that I didn't think I was comfortable with, but I love now. I really love. So this is a homesteaded, would be homesteaded if approved.
All right, thank you. Any other one wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Chair Wintertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to find a word in here. Motion to approve.
The sale.
Yeah, the sale of the ten.
Ten twenty-one Sixth Street Court East.
Thank you. I was on the wrong.
All right, we have. All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the, oh, yes, sir. Sorry.
Um, ma'am. Based on what was discussed by Ms. Moore, Mrs. Moore, um, of putting some stipulations into that contract, is it best that we pull that, that that be not on the CRA agenda tomorrow, to give that time to happen?
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Munyon. I'm not sure if tomorrow is actually approval of the contract, or it's another step into letting us continue to negotiate the final contract for tomorrow.
Well, my thought was that that contract, um, was to be executed so they can go forward with their due diligence, and their inspections and things like that.
Doesn't have the.
Are we approving a contract here?
No, but tomorrow, tomorrow we are.
Not this approving, we're moving until tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, but.
Redevelopment of the contract.
But, if I could just.
How about he and I discuss that question, um, and it may not happen tomorrow. I think that's a good point to be brought out, so we'll get what was on the agenda for tomorrow and see if it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
And if you have to have a special CRA meeting, you have to figure it out. All right, Ms. Moore?
Um, I, to the question a little bit, um, just to add to it, um, tomorrow, the contract as it's written permits them, you know, it makes the closing contingent on that agreement. So, in the, so I feel, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it right now, but I was okay with that, so that they could do inspections under contract, knowing that if we never got to terms on the redevelopment agreement, the closing doesn't happen. Yeah.
That could be that way. So, good. All right, so we've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Thank you. Um, all right, moving forward, we'll go to next. Madam Clerk?
Item seven B is the Justice Assistant Grant, or Grant or JAG program, and it's also a public hearing.
Okay. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. I am just, uh, seeking approval to move forward with the purchase of a TruNarc handheld narcotics analyzer. In short, this gives us the ability to test for a variety of substances, some that are very dangerous to come in contact, even when my folks have gloves. Um, we've posted this as required, and, um, just looking for approval of this will add to, um, actually, the countywide JAG grant, whereas we also applied for some cheaper handheld ones and an additional one of these, as well as some wellness classes for our officers.
Okay. Any questions before we go to the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Speaking? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the City of Braden fiscal year twenty-twenty-three proposed plan for the awarded Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Barnaby. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Item seven C is the first reading of Ordinance four zero one four, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, relating to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, amending chapter forty-six, article three, section forty-six dash sixty-two, to revise quorum requirements, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading on public hearing for Ordinance four zero one four will be on September thirteenth.
Okay, so, just notifying, moving that forward to September thirteenth. Any other comments?
No.
Hearing none. Um, Madam Clerk, before you go forward, I did, and I was remiss in last meeting, in not recognizing, um, Mr. Mitchell in our audience there, that, um, has been at a couple meetings we didn't, that, uh, mention, but hopefully, just thank you for coming, and, uh, I know we're working hard, and, you know, there's things that, that go good and bad sometimes, but we're working forward to try to make it better for all the residents that, um, live in our housing authorities and that. So, thank you for being here. Thank you. All right. Yep, Madam Clerk?
Item seventy is the first reading of Ordinance four zero one five, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending chapter eighteen, article two, section eighteen dash thirty-six of the Code of Ordinances entitled Unsafe Structures, to provide for the city council to hear appeals relating to unsafe structures, and to add an appeal fee, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second hearing, or, um, second reading and public hearing for this ordinance is also on September thirteenth.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions, pushing that forward? All right, thank you. Moving forward, Madam Clerk?
Item eight A is city administration collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bradenton and the Florida Police Benevolent Association, officers, detectives, and sergeants.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Clerk Melton has pointed out, uh, this is approval of the PBA contract, the collective bargaining agreement between, um, the, 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 uh, PBA as, and the city, as it relates to police officers and sergeants. Um, you may remember that we had had a multi-year agreement last year, but it had an economic opener, and this specifically addresses that economic opener, and specifically under pay plan, um, which is appendix A. Uh, that's what we were kinda focusing on, and, and we were trying to put it in focus as it relates to recruitment and retention of police officers, uh, that has been a challenge here locally, but, but nationally as well, statewide and the like. And, um, it's a moving target in a lot of ways, because as we adjusted last year to about fifty-two, fifty-three thousand on a starting salary from our, our, our starting salary of about forty-five thousand the year before, so too did other departments. And now we have departments that are in the mid-sixties, basically. This is, I believe, one of the largest historical raises for the police department uh, in the history of the city. The starting salary will now go to sixty thousand, um, annually as a base, and other provisions for officers, for recruitment, that, um, with more tenure throughout the ranks of the police, uh, the ranks of, of officers and sergeants. Uh, it's got a significant cost to the city, for sure, um, and it's a multi-year deal of three years. Uh, the, the second year is, I believe, a four percent, and I think it's a three percent after that. Mr. Williams is nodding his head. And we think what this does is, is it recognizes the importance of the role that our police officers play in our city. It rewards them for their, their tenure and service, their commitment to come onto the department, to stay with the department, hopefully, and to provide top-quality, um, policing services in a rather challenging environment, uh, across the board nationally, not, not here alone. And, uh, it's an investment, is, is the way I see it. So, it's before you. Uh, it did pass ratification on, I believe, a seventy-nine to seven vote when it went to the membership. I think the membership of this particular, uh, bargaining unit would probably be in the order of about a hundred and fifteen officers, because you have some members of the department that are not members of the collective bargaining unit, whether it's officers and sergeants, lieutenants, and then non-members above in executive staff ranks and the like. But when you look at that ratio, it's overwhelming, the passage. So, with that, it stands for any further questions?
Right. Well, I think one of the things that's important to look at, last year, when they ratified that contract, there was an opportunity for this council not to give an opener. I felt it was important, when I got asked that question before it came to the council, to give that opener in the right time at the right place, and this council obviously ratified that, but I believe the vote was somewhere in the high forties to thirty-something to approve it. And, and, um, obviously, working through this year, when they, we brought that up, I thought it was important, again, to, to talk about it and go through what we can do as a city, and obviously, in, in theory, as being the chief negotiator in the position, we delegate that out, and Mr. Williams with a group of people, as well as, um, the PBA and what they did to really work in the group within our department now, really saw the value of working for the whole, not just for a selected upper group. And, and again, that's, again, working, it was, this is long-term, is what we had said, and I think it's important to notice that you saw by the vote, seventy-nine to seven, really ratified in a positive way what we're doing, and the cost to the city, I think, you know, monetarily, yes, it does look high, but for what the long-term and the longevity of it, it's not. And I was talking with three of our, um, longer-tenured officers, and they told me the other day that it makes them feel better, that they know if something does happen, you know, we, we hope nothing happens, but if there is something where you have to have officers running in behind you, you wanna know that they've got four, five, six years, seven, ten years of experience, not the rotation of one year all the time, because, you know, it does come to knowing each other and working together. So, that was a, a great thing, and I think it's something that our staff through and with the, the PBA representatives. Another thing that I'm proud of, through our administration and, and the council here, is that this is ratified before October one, because we always, in the years I've been here, it was always going into November, December, January, February, we'd have to make it retroactive. So, again, collaboration, working together, and making things better is what it's about, so.
And I have Ms., uh, Ms. Taylor and, and, uh, Mr. Williams, who were responsible for negotiating it with the negotiating team, um, and they're available for any questions. I, I'd also just lastly point out that, and, and perhaps, um, Counselor Kramer is probably aware of this. It's one of the highest participations as far as numbers of people that voted on the contract. At, at, you know, when we look at about a hundred and fifteen members of the bargaining unit, it might be a little bit less, but, but roughly eighty percent, eighty-one percent people voting on the contracts, a fairly high number historically.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Would you? Yeah.
Because I think we're somewhere around a hundred, a hundred and two or something that would be in this bargaining unit.
Is it a hundred? Yeah, it would do.
And with, with vacancies right now as well, so, um, to get almost eighty percent of it, higher than.
And I will say this to my brothers in blue, my brothers in red, the fire department would have a hundred percent. The police department's never had a hundred percent, never close to it. This is as close as they've ever had.
So, we're, we're sharing a lot of love around with the blue and the red today. Let's have fun with it. So, that's what, that makes it fun.
They've, they've always stood shoulder to shoulder. The police department's always had too much division amongst their rank and file, and it's good to see the vote come out at this number of participants, and also the number it came out at.
And that's a tribute to, to what the city is working towards, is trying to do that. So, all right, so I guess the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, thank you. Uh, move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bradenton and the Florida PBA for the officers, detectives, and sergeants, uh, for the contract period of October first, twenty-twenty-three, through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barnaby. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. And again, once again, thank everybody involved, um, and I, I know Lance was pointing to, to Nilsa, but thank you for all that, and I know you guys worked hard, but also worked for the good of the whole. And, and again, we were glad to have the bargaining unit working and the PBA being involved, so. And I believe all of you got the letter last night that I got, so, um, perfect. So, thank you. Um, I guess, Miss, Madam Clerk, next?
Item eight B is also under city administration waiver of fees for Manatee County.
Mr. Perry?
Mayor, Council, uh, this matter was put on the agenda to address some, some issues, uh, regarding our, our radio communications tower and, and emergency communications, and, and the short, um, overview of that is that the county needs to replace the, the parking garage, where the current tower for the P twenty-five system, and I have to be careful about how I describe this, because there are some security concerns regarding locations and other issues and radio communications, but the, the current, um, tower i- is on top of the garage, and the, the garage has to be rebuilt, um, for the county, because it's structurally unsound, and there's about a two-year plan. So, the first step is, what are we gonna do to replace the tower for the county? They came to us and asked, um, asked some questions about alternative sites. Uh, they had to do an electronics engineering study to find locations where the radio angulation and signal strength and all that stuff could be matched to its current location um, on the garage, and provide adequate, you know, um, repeating signalization and, and all these things. So, they located an area which is on Seventeenth Street, down by the water treatment plant, down by the Juvenile Justice Center, down by where the Safe Place for Children is that we had that before, um, the council a couple months back, that the, the county owns. The problem is, is that the property was zoned residential, and don't frankly know why, uh, because there isn't a whole lot of residential down there. It's more industrial and government. Initially, what we had looked at was the possibility of having to go through a series of things that would include having the county pay a significant amount in fees for applications for a comp plan change, um, a potential, uh, rezone, and an SIP. However, Mr. DeLong, in working with, with staff, and I believe legal, has kind of found a shortcut to do that that's permissible under the zoning code, to allow that relocation of the tower to occur without having to go through that. But however, ha, if they do have to go through it, I don't think the county should have to pay the city, since the city has a lot of their equipment on it. It's a collaborative effort. Um, they provide a benefit to the city, and it's a really important public safety function, as well as the county has been very, very generous with us, in my opinion, in cost shares and, and, and support and other things. And so, I wanted to take it before the council. We don't think that those fees are gonna be attended under the proposed solution that Mr. DeLong has, has suggested, and that we'll, we'll proceed with, but if it is, we'd like it be in place to waive the fees.
And I think it's important, like you say, with the collaboration, one of the things too, is it, it does kinda get a tower that is not right in the middle of the city, um, for our looks, but also, i- it's going to improve the technology of what we do with that, and again, stays kinda quiet on, you know, some of the private stuff.
Yeah.
Protective stuff, but, um, it also, with that garage, it's gonna add several hundred spaces for use in our urban core as we go forward for, for public. So, I think it's a win-win, and, but that's the first step. They have to do, they have to have that done before they start anything, because that can never have a moment of being down. It's not like, said, oh, that can sit down for six months. It's gotta go right into it, so. Um, yeah, I didn't real, you know, I know we were bringing it forward, but I think it's an opportunity to succeed, so. Any questions? You know, you've all been briefed.
I'd just request a motion, uh, allowing the, the city administration to waive fees for the, uh, the emergency, uh, radio communications tower.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes, sorry.
Carries five to zero. Thank you.
I was moving on to the next item.
Item, so, all right, moving forward, Mr. Perry?
Uh, item C is a presentation by Planning and Community Development regarding electronic permitting, uh, software system. Before we get to that, I just wanna give you a little bit of overview of, of the presentation. Um, Mr. Wenzel and Tamara are going to be here, um, that have been spearheading this particular effort, which is the electronic permitting software of GoPost. Um, it is the piece of a larger component, Acela, that allows electronic plans submittal, and a whole host of other things that we think will bring efficiency to our, um, our plan, planning permitting process itself. But it is not the, the whole Acela, um, piece, which would be an ERP, much, much more robust overall, um, uh, the system, platform system, with integration and a whole host of other IT things that maybe Ms. Lanky and, and Ms. Robin can, Singer can give at a different time, probably. But this is, this is narrowly confined to the GoPost permitting system. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wenzel.
Uh, good morning. I'm Patrick Wenzel, your building official, excuse me. Um, Tamara's Renee, Deputy Building Official. Um, thank you for having us, and we, uh, I'm gonna put this out here first, and I'll let Tamara hold this up. It's very exciting. We have these for all of you. Do you GoPost?
You've seen some of our folks wearing these, hopefully, at the counter.
This is a little, this is a little, uh, catchy phrase that we, the people in the office have been wearing, and it's just introducing the public to our new permitting software, the electronic permitting software. Um, he was describing the EPR. That's, that's just a little bit different. Um, this is where we were and where we're going. It's, it's pretty. It's pretty self-explanatory. We were kind of behind the eight ball after COVID, through COVID, and afterwards, the state mandated that we go electronic. We have to accept electronic plans review, and the way we were doing it was not very efficient at all. So the GoPost software is designed to, just what it says, it creates an efficiency that wasn't there before. I don't know how many times I came into the office back in 2021, and the first thing I hear was, do you have that file? Because we were working with PDFs, and only one person could have it at a time. And if I left it open, nobody could get it, or where did I leave it? And it was, there was a lot of confusion. We needed to fix things. So we started, we started looking for solutions. Tracking of permits was probably the most important part here. The contractors can go in, they have accounts, they can go into the new system, they can look up their accounts, they can find out where their plans are, what phase they're in, and it's just, it's much more efficient than somebody on a phone having to go look for information from a plans reviewer. When City Hall closed for COVID, we were having people drop plans off in the lobby. There was really not the staff there to accept everything that was coming in. It was just a very inefficient way of doing business. It was necessary, but it was very inefficient. But we struggled through, and it was a struggle. We started looking at systems in 2021, new permitting systems. We went through quite a few. We eventually ended up with Acela, planned on purchasing Acela. EPlanSoft is going to be the EPR, which is our electronic permitting system, and GoPost is what we're talking about today, is an add-on to EPlanSoft, which is only for taking in permitting and tracking. So we're working with EPlanSoft and GoPost right now until Acela comes online. So permit tracking system right now is in Munis. Well, it's GoPost now. We're still using Munis. And this wasn't a hard, we didn't tell them they had to stop this, you've got to do this. We're phasing it in very slowly. People are still bringing in plans the way they used to. That's okay. We'll help them get them into the system, into the new system. We'll help them create their accounts, and it's a very soft opening for the new system. So Munis has been here, I'm not even sure how long.
2014.
2014. And this is what we've been using for contractor licensing, planning position code enforcement, and city council finance. Munis is, even though GoPost is initiated and we're using it, Munis still has a part to play in that, which will eventually be phased out when we go to Acela. Acela is mid-next year, probably. I'm going to say, I believe it was June?
Yes.
Okay. EPlanSoft is an electronic permitting review software, which allows simultaneous review of everything. The old PDF style was Mr. Grunisal would look at it. When he was done, then Mr. Kramer could look at it, and it went one person at a time. And if one person didn't do what they were supposed to do, it just got, it was just bad, because the contractors always want what they want when they want it, which in their business, it's, you know, it's forgivable. We have to be accountable. And now it's more, there's more accountability with the new systems than we had before. So GoPost is a, it's a public interface for EPlanSoft. And like I said before, it allows contractors access. They can upload their plans directly rather than by email. There's notifications built in. It's being used as an interim measure until Acela is implemented. Acela is going to take over all of the stuff that GoPost is doing. GoPost was a stopgap measure just to get us out of the, the the email calamity that we were in. So EPlanSoft and GoPost, we've had this up, I think we went live June 16th. 355 in-county permits since the implementation. We had instructions for contractors and public at the front counter. Everything was very easy. Staff did an amazing job rolling this out with informational, the brochures, the booklets, the how-to's. If they, I mean, we just, if somebody needs to hold their hand, we're going to hold their hand so they can get through this. It's going to be very easy for everybody to get the job done. Every time the email responded, an email response came back from permitting, they were notified that this was coming. There was plenty of notification built into it. So we need to end the hard copy. We need to end that PDF, emailing PDFs in, and that's our goal. We need to stop that because it's, it's just, it's just not efficient. And with these new systems, this is exactly what we're going to be able to accomplish. Our future is, we're really living kind of in George Jetson time. It's amazing where we came from when we were kids to what we see nowadays with a lot of this stuff. Acela is shared by many jurisdictions around us. Longbook Key is going to sell, Sarasota County is going to sell, Manatee County has it, Hillsborough County has it. We're surrounded by Acela users. It's a very good product. I've used it myself in the past. It's a, it's a good product, and it will be, it will be beneficial. So everything that we're doing in Munis now is going to be going into Acela. Munis will still be there only for finance. So we're not going to change that aspect of it. Acela will take care of everything except for the financial part. Configuration with Acela is currently about 16%, and I know that number sounds kind of low, but all of the building, planning, and code enforcement modules have been built. We're testing. Data conversion and building the system is the bulk of what they're going to be doing. It's going to be happening very rapidly now. As soon as we get done with user testing on the modules that we've built so far, it's going to go pretty quick. So June 2024, full implementation. I thank you very much for your time, and if anybody has any questions, Tamara will be happy to answer them.
Yes, ma'am.
Couple of questions. Thanks. First off, you said something about a soft opening. What exactly is that going to entail? From a contractor coming in, are they going to, what does that mean? They're going to have to input differently or?
We're not telling somebody that they have to have their account open before they get here.
Okay.
Somebody still comes in and they've got their plans in their hand. We're going to take their plans. We're going to have a scanner set up on the counter. We're going to help them scan them into the system. We're going to help them create their account. It's not, no, you have to go home and open up your account.
Okay.
That's, a soft open is, you know, we're going to, we're going to be extremely helpful to everybody that comes in to help them get set up in the new system.
Well, that's great. I have one other question. And I have a lot of interaction with contractors and homeowners, and a lot of these older neighborhoods have so many different idiosyncrasies, non-conforming lots, all of that. And I am completely 100 glad to see this happening, but are we still going to have that way for people that have those things that don't fit into the box to work with them, to figure out a way for them to have, to do what they want to do, even if it means going for a variance or whatever? How are those people going to interact with everything being on the computer? Or will we still be, how is that going to work with that?
The modules that are built for planning, all of the zoning questions and everything are built into that. Robin would probably speak a little bit more to the zoning aspect of it, but everything is built into Acela to assist people with questions like that.
Yeah, and we're still going to have sort of the user-friendly approach to home builders or homeowners, I should say, who want to come in for an owner or builder permit. They can still do that, and we're still, as Pat said, going to help them scan things in, do things the right way. They're still going to be able to track their permits online, just like contractors can. And actually, that facility is already available so that if somebody wants to see how their permit is progressing, they can go online and do that. There's an interface on the permitting webpage that tells them how to do that. So they can just enter in their address and find out what's going on. As far as like non-conformities with respect to zoning, we, nothing changes. We're going to continue to work with people. If they need a variance, we'll work through, you know, with them on that as well.
So the only comment I probably have, which is kind of, well, two, I'll get to the second one in a minute, looking at Pat, but the, ask everybody in this room who the Flintstones are and the Jetsons are. Everybody would know, but going forward, ask my grandchildren who the Flintstones and the Jetsons are. They have no idea. I mean, Barney's even gone. Barney's out of this kid's thing.
I hear he's coming back, though.
I heard Barney for my whole kid's childhood. That was the best song. And then, nice jacket, Pat.
Thank you.
Closets. Just fun. But no, I think this is.
Back to the rental place in about 10 minutes.
Yeah, yes. I think this is something that we've looked at in my 10-plus years here, is, you know, technology, technology. And if everyone else kind of around us is using a lot of it, and, you know, a lot of them already know it, they just now will be able to use it.
Mayor, that's a very good point, and that's one of the reasons why we kind of chose Acela as. Every contractor that comes into the City of Braden to work also works someplace else, so there's not, there's not a lot of training to do. You know, they're already in the system, so it's going to be very, I'm looking at it to be very smooth going forward when Acela comes online.
And something I think people, you know, 20 years ago, and we talked about this a little bit yesterday, Mr. Perry and I, we were annexing a lot in because people could work with the city permitting a lot quicker than the county. The county realized that, kind of got up on it, and, you know, and then we kind of fell behind a little bit with some of it. And we do a lot less than the county because of the growth in our square mileage that we have. But we still have to be up there for our people that we serve, and that's, thank you for doing that. And I know that, you know, there's a lot of pushing and going, but it's something that is going to make us better. And again, still be in that friendly city that we want to be, so thank you for that. Anybody else? Thank you. Do we need to, we don't need to do anything on this. It's just a presentation.
Appreciate these guys working hard on it over the course of.
Yeah. Kind of closer to the microphone, so they can, so we can hear you.
From a reviewer's standpoint, communication is immediate. As soon as we have comments, an email sent to the applicant. Departments can speak to each other through it. When we see, we can all look and see where everybody's at, and the best part is that we can all work on it at the same time. That really slowed us down. So as a reviewer of these plans, I think it's an amazing program.
Well, I think, I think some of the things we're doing too is trying to bring some of our departments all in one place now, because before, oh, it's over at the fire department, and they're slowing it down, or not to pick on the fire department again, it's over at Public Works. Now, you know, when it's your turn, you can see, oh, I'm not ready to look at it because this part hasn't finished. Now it can go from Public Works to Fire to all the different departments that need to. And if there is some simultaneous things that can be worked on, it's going to be there. So that's, that's the good part of it. And we're thankful, appreciate it.
I'll make sure the shirts get upstairs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure that.
Yeah, get them out, so.
Good job.
All right, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any unfinished business that I'm aware of.
Okay, Mr. Perry, anything?
Yes, sir.
I don't think there is. All right, moving on to council reports. We'll start in Ward 5. It rotates. Wait, were you first last?
Yes, she was.
Ward 1. Ward 1, we'll do that, so.
I don't have much to report from Ward 1, only that last night I did attend the book signing for the new book that Judge Gilbert Smith has written, and it's actually going to be in two volumes, talking about the 100 years of Kiwanis serving the children here in Manatee County. If you get a chance, take a look at the book. We'll preorder for the second one. A lot of the, the great people that have come before us in this community and have built this wonderful foundation that we have here are featured in the book and really kind of is a testament to how important, you know, public service and serving our children are to all of us, and that's why we're here. And so I just want to congratulate Kiwanis, Judge Smith, and I encourage everybody to buy a book. And I think that's all I have.
All right, so I just wanted to comment on that with, kind of following up with what we've done in this community. You know, a lot of the, we still say we're a small community, but with what Judge Smith, his father did before him, and others through Kiwanis, and, you know, and there's some out there that say that's a detriment when you have those type of people that are longtime people in a community, but those are the people that support us and do the things that are really trying to help children and the future of our city, and obviously our whole county, but we're in the city, and that's what people do to really, to make it good and not be those, those old timers that, that aren't promoting. So what Judge Smith has done is really taken a lot of his time, and it's well commended, so thank you for that. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had questions from the community as to when we were going to do some type of reopening ceremony at Lewis Park, and I want them to know that it is on the horizon, but we do have to finish up on a few of the items before we can get to that. But stay tuned, it's coming. And then I'd also like to offer my sympathy to the family of Frank Gamski. He was quite a character, the owner of Linger Lodge and the Linger Lodge Restaurant, if you've ever been out there. It truly was one of the most unusual restaurants in the world. And his, his family is grieving his passing, and I just want to offer my sympathy. Thank you.
And it still is one of the most unique. We were out there for dinner a couple of weeks ago, and we were glad it came back the way it did, so. All right, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, sir. One thing I've gotten a lot of calls about in emails, and I've talked to Mr. McCollin about a lot. It rains in Florida. It hasn't rained a lot for a while, but it's raining. And if it's pouring down rain at the rate of three inches an hour, you might have some flooding in your neighborhoods on the streets, so please be careful as you're trying to pass through them. The drains are working as they're supposed to, but, you know, if things get over capacity, we, we have to be patient. That said, enough of that. Yesterday and today are the days of SIM-SOC, for those of you who have been through Leadership Manatee. I'm happy to be on the board there, but today I'll be heading over there after this to help facilitate. Part of it's a bit of catharsis for me for my time on Team Red, which was not fun. Anyway, just thank you to the, the staff of the chamber who puts it together every year, Jackie Dzelski and her staff. Always do a great job. And of note, the new starting pay for the officers is now right at three times what I started at back 28 years ago.
That's about what you deserved, probably, right?
According to, well, I won't mention any of your past family members' names. But yes, sir.
I think he would agree with that, especially now, but.
But didn't you have one of the cars like the Flintstones that you had to run to?
It had a hole in the bottom, yeah. It did.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Moore?
I'm happy to hear that I'm in good company as a Team Red alum. Yep, that morning, my husband had already done Leadership Manatee, and when I said I was red, he just gave me a cryptic, eat a good breakfast. So that was very fun. But anyway. So I've been getting a lot of citizens asking me to meet in either pockets of neighborhoods in Ward 4 or to provide HOA updates for their newsletters and whatnot. So my announcement is that I'm hoping to hold a town hall of sorts in October, late October, so I can just catch people up to what's happening. Of course, primarily, that's going to be a lot of public work planning, which I'm sure Mr. McCollin is super excited about, me organizing. I wanted to let you all know that I have agreed to participate in connection with the Manatee County Homelessness Task Force, the Permanent Supportive Housing Work subgroup, and I'll be meeting on Friday, September 1st about that. And I'll just continue to keep you all updated with that work. And I believe that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Coachman? Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. Now it's my turn.
You could've been done already.
No, I like it like this. It's fine. Well, Ward Five is alive. School is off and running all over the county, all over the state. And I'll just leave it at that. It's off and running. The only thing I guess I have to say, well, before I even get into citizen concerns, I just wanna also say that having Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Ellis Mitchell here, each meeting, you're here each meeting listening, and I, I am the liaison to meet with you and your advisory board. I did not get to meet with you all this summer and in the past, but the, just the recent last one, but I will be back on board. I, I can just attest to how hard you all work. I think right now you're all fully staffed. Is that still the case?
I'm not sure.
Oh, well, close. But you were there at one point, right? So it's just always great to have you here. Is there anything you want to bring to the council?
No, we're working on-
I just, if you come up to the-
Sorry, I guess you still have to get up.
Ellis Mitchell, Executive Director, Brangton Housing Authority. We're working on a physical needs assessment right now, which is our first step of, of plan redevelopment. After that, we're gonna be doing an environmental study. So probably within the next year or so, we'll be coming to the city council a lot, asking for some favors as far as redevelopment is concerned. As Mayor Brown said earlier, the Brangton Village, they're doing redevelopment, but it's on hold right now. They had an eighty percent increase in the insurance costs, so through all their numbers, so they're on hold right now. But we will be coming to the city council probably within the next couple of months with some proposals to redevelop our SLUG site. We have two sites, SLUG and Page. Page was built in nineteen seventy-eight, SLUG was built in nineteen sixty-one, and so it really needs a lot of work. So we've already had our first onsite visit. We had a company from St. Louis come out. They spent a day on a property. They randomly selected about twenty-five percent of our units to go into, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna come back that we're looking at a lot of work per unit. We need bathrooms replaced, sinks and things like that. Our Page site, we're probably just gonna repipe those. We've put new roofs in a couple of years ago. Everybody's got new appliances, new HVA systems. We just painted the units, so over there, we're probably doing some landscaping. We had the fence painted. So our Page site is in pretty good condition, considering that was built in nineteen seventy-eight, but our SLUG site needs a lot of work. Okay?
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Lots of hard work keeping affordable housing in Ward Five. Last evening, had the opportunity to attend a meeting in the community at the Thirteenth Ave. Dream Center, and thank you, Mayor, for also being there. It was an opportunity for Ms. Clayback and, and all of Public Works to discuss with the community the new drainage project that's going to be, being underway shortly. And it, it's basically trying to remedy a flooding issue that they've had for decades. And there have been things done, and it has minimized it, you know, quite a bit, to be honest, from what I can remember as a child. But this next phase is, is going to even help a little bit more. Well, you, you know, won't totally eradicate it, but, but it will at least help. So it was really great to see the turnout. I did hear some people say they didn't feel like a, a lot of notice was given, and that, that's just something that, that's, that's a beast in terms of governments trying to get the word out of meetings and so forth to the community, 'cause there's so many ways to do it. But the, of course, the easiest way is the internet, and unfortunately, a lot of people, us, some of us older folks are just not as tech savvy and, or have the capability. So just hope that in some way we can come up with ten other ways to communicate with the public, but it was still a great turnout. And Ms. Clayback did a wonderful job presenting the project and making it understandable, because I have, I'm not an engineer by no stretch of the imagination in trying to explain that kind of thing and put it in terms that, you know, the layman can, can understand. She did a great job. She did divulge to me that her parents were both, they're both retired teachers, and their skills definitely rolled down to her, 'cause she did an excellent job. Ward Five is alive, that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman. And kind of going off of that last night, we had thirteen residents there, so it was, and, and seven staff, including Ms. Coachman and myself. So obviously, anytime we wanna get information out, we try different venues, and it had got out on Friday to most of the people on the streets by actually passing out, been on the website. So last time we had a meeting there about city hall stuff, we had two people there, and that had been out for a long time in the different venues. So I was glad that it showed an interest, because as we know, when something is happening to you particular, you have more interest. And what I was, was very impressed with, Ms. Clayback, and it was the second meeting in a week, week and a half that I'd been out with her on flooding issues, areas that we're doing, and she did a great job at being able to say, hey, we did talk to different people during the week, and not every project is gonna be exactly what the neighbors like in their neighborhood. But when you realize, and, and what Ms. Coachman said was, the flooding is down from two thousand and three, project that was done in one area, another project that was done, and now this is the third project, the flooding is now not getting to their, from the two projects, not getting to their houses now, where before it was getting to the houses. And, and as Mr. Kramer said, if we have a, a great storm, as long as it stays on the street, even if your street's flooded, we're okay, 'cause it's not in your house. Now, we still implement plans all over to try to get it where it's not getting into your house, but, and not flooding your street. But I lived, and I said this story for thirty, almost thirty years, lived on Thirty Second Street West, and if the tide was in, my garage was underwater, 'cause it was flat land. My house was built up, built in the forties on, you know, the stem walls. But there was one time when we were a moat, when we had that much rain and the tide was up so much. Ms. Barnaby lived down the street, and, and it was, you know, if we'd had cell phones in those days, we probably would've had some good pictures, but, but we didn't, and the Polaroids didn't work too well. And ask a fifth grader what a Polaroid is, and, you know, so anyway, but no, I just think that there's, there's opportunity, and, and I wanna commend Mr. McClellan and his staff on really trying to work to get the drainage the proper way, as well as still working with the community to help some of the churches. So that was something that, that, and this council actually took that upon to say, hey, make it work, but still help the community. So that was done. I think when we left that meeting, the three or four people that, you know, really came in with the pitchforks left a little bit better, you know, again, they're never gonna be happy that we're changing something, but, but they realize that it's for the good of the whole, so, so that was a good meeting, and that's something that, that really, I know we've done in the past, but we're doing it more in the, the general area. Had the one in Ward Two, and then now the one in Ward Five. So, and I'm, I'm glad Ms. Moore is gonna have some things, and, 'cause that's what, questions. If you can answer them, and we can put all we want on the internet, but if it's, people don't get it unless you talk to them and let, hear, hear them, so that's working good. Just wanna reiterate about school. Our fire department obviously goes out a little bit more on those first days and really makes the presence. That was well received, as well as the police department going around, and, and really, I think it shows the kids that, and, and the teachers, that, hey, we're here for you when, when you need us, but we're also here when we wanna have the fun part of things, so that was good to see, and, and really slowed people down. I know there's some things going on that, that hopefully will slow the people in that, that we don't have to hear about some tragedy, so. But appreciate that, and just everything else, we're working, and, yes, ma'am?
I would be, I, I just have to say this too, and I apologize for interrupting you. On Friday evening, I got a phone call from an eighty-five-year-old woman that was quite concerned on how she was going to get through the weekend with her water shut off. So I just simply said, oh, well, let me make some calls. She had a flooding problem, but it was within her home. There was something wrong with the plumbing, and we, as a city, Public Works, had to go and turn the water off so that it didn't continue flooding her home. And then the repairs were made, and once the repairs were made, she needed the water turned back on, and it was after hours. So she wasn't happy. She lived a street over from me, and she sent someone to my house, but luckily I wasn't there at that time. But, but I, I just say kudos, 'cause we are truly the friendly city. Once the, once the concern was put in place, it was handled, you know, and thanks to Mr. Keys, Mr. Perry, the mayor, we were able to get that water on for her before late in the evening, and, believe me, that made my weekend better too. So I just had to say how, after hours, we are still the friendly city. It, it's twenty-four seven.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to department heads. Anyone? Anything, Mr. McClellan?
Morning, Mayor, Council. I wanted to take an opportunity that Chief Bevan traditionally comes up and gives a feel-good story. And Public Works has a feel-good story. So, Mr. Moore, could you come up? I think you've all met Mr. Moore. He is our Clean City Coordinator, and he drives through the city on a regular basis to observe and record where there are debris piles, bulk items to be picked up. So on a day, a week or so ago, I got a phone call from Mr. Moore. He said, boss, I just wanna let you know I'm gonna be driving out of the city limits in my vehicle, and I just wanna make you aware of that. And I'm like, okay, well, what's going on? Well, the story is, he was on his rounds in the Village Green area, making, making his notations of things. And in entering the development, he noticed an older woman out walking in the heat with a walker. He kinda made note of it in his head, and then he made his rounds through Village Green and came back out sometime later, and this lady was still walking with her walker. Well, he took it upon himself to stop and ask the lady, how are you doing? Are you doing okay? I'm doing fine. Well, do you know where you're going? Well, no, I, I, I think I'm kind of lost. And he's like, well, where do you live? Do you know where you live? And she told him, and he looked it up, and he goes, ma'am, you're, you're almost two miles away from your house, and you know that you, did you, do you realize you crossed Manatee Avenue? No, no, I don't. Well, can I take you home? So Mr. Moore took her home, and he said, you know, I'm gonna wait while you walk into your house. And she went into the house but left the door wide open, so he went out to find out what was going on. Well, he finds out that this ninety-year-old woman lives with two of her daughters, one of whom was a traveling nurse who was working away, and the other was a stu, schoolteacher who had just started school. So this woman would've been out in the heat all of that time, and I can't be prouder of having an employee like Mr. Moore to, to take the initiative to help out when it could've been easily just driven by going, what is that? So I just wanted you guys to know that Public Works has some good stories too.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Great work.
Yeah, great job, and that's, I think, as we see it, you know, that's, that's the staff, and I think, you know, we have the whole team full of that. You know, you're gonna be there to help people, and, and, you know, even though, like we say, we have our boundaries, but that's okay to go out and do that thing and get her to the proper place, and, and I know, you know, and we all work within healthcare, and you hear about things that, that people need that hand up, and that was great, so we appreciate that. Thank you. All right, any other department heads? Hearing none, will be adjourned. Thank you.